Do I have a motion to open the March 29, 2023 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
Here.
Here.
Do I have a motion to recess and to executive session? We have a student and contractual matter to discuss. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the March 29, 2023 regular business meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Michelle, would you please do a roll call?
Here.
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 Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm just going to request that we take a moment of silence to remember the lives of those lost in the school in Tennessee. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have one set of minutes from the March 15, 2023 Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. At this time, if any member of the public would like to address the board, you may do so by approaching the podium. Please state your first and last name. It does not appear that we have any. Oh.
Before we do, oh, somebody's coming up. Sorry.
Go ahead. Hi.
Hi, how are you? I'm Michelle Loa Konow. I have two students at Purchase in third and first grade. First, I just wanted to share that within the last couple of weeks, and I know that it's understood that there were lots of theater productions in the district, but Purchase has finished theirs off, and it was incredible. So another wonderful experience that was brought back for all three grades. So thank you to everyone just for your support, because that was, it was pretty amazing to see what the kids have done, and it was my first experience, so I was pretty proud. And I guess the only, the question that I have on the heels of the tragedy in Nebraska is just kind of like a refresher on sort of our safety protocols. And also, there's a concern, it's overall, but just a concern that now that we have all four CROs at our elementary schools, unfortunately, we don't see police cars at two of the schools, I guess, Purchase being one of them, only because they're sharing one, and they're dropping off the police officers. So just out of that, you know, the vision, the visual, and I think Dr. Will, you've spoken about this before, of the statement that the police are there, that part's lacking. So I just would like to know more information about why that is, and if there's any way for us to help and advocate for a change.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, fine, perfect, perfect. So we're going to just quickly go out of order due to the fact that we have some police presence tonight, and we are going to actually address safety. I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Will, do his update, and then I'll come back to the president's update with good news, so.
Well, thanks for being here, everybody. These are horrible times. I've had to do this far too many times. I was the president of the Lower Hudson Council during the Sandy Hook crisis, and I thought maybe that would shake us, but apparently we still haven't been able to figure out how to make schools safer. With the exception of our district where I asked two representatives from our police department, who as I, as you know, I talk about all the time, are invaluable partners to all of us. You probably don't know, and I don't talk in great detail on TV about too many things, but I'll give you some general updates. In response to your first question, the police are already fixing that problem, and the car is going to be alternately placed at the elementary schools. As is always the case, sometimes they just need to be asked and they respond, so thank you already for that change. But I just, I'm trying not to get overwhelmed by this. So Dr. Ladwig and I probably spend far too much time thinking about school safety. Our police department is held up, and our school-police department relationship is held up in this county as exemplary, because our police do not invest in the schools when an emergency happens. They're an everyday part of it. I just need to say a big, out loud thank you, and we should all remember that we're the only school district in the county that has a full-time SRO in every school, which to me is something I've always asked for. It's a very, very expensive thing that the town provides to us, because like me, they see our public schools as public spaces, and there is nothing more significant than the safety of your children. As much as teaching and learning is important, the thing that probably keeps me up at night more is the safety of our kids. So a couple of things I'm going to say out loud, because I want you to know if you don't know, but you need to be reminded. Every police officer in this community has access to all of our schools instantly, and they know, unlike other people, how to get into every room and where there is access for them, hidden throughout the building, to every possible entry point that they can need to access in a real emergency, so there will never be that situation. Our police train for the most difficult of experiences in each of our six buildings, not with your children there, because we don't want your children to see that training, quite honestly. It's, these are little kids, and it's even traumatic for kids that are not little, quite honestly. Every police officer has access on their phones to the floor plans of every one of our buildings. And I can remember way back when, people thought it was controversial that I wanted the police department to have full-time access to every video camera that's posted in all of our schools. So if you were to go to our police department right now, you would see that they have live feeds all the time, so they can see inside the hallways and into the playgrounds of all of our schools. There is, there is no guarantee that we can keep everybody safe all the time, but I asked Kevin to be here tonight, because he's our conduit and works with our SROs, but you know, SROs have, there's a misunderstanding about what they provide to our schools. Yes, they are a means of safety, but you know, the greatest tool that we have keeping your kids safe is making sure we know which kids are in trouble before they act out. And I can't tell you how many times it has been an SRO, or frankly, a Harrison detective who has been able to not only intervene when we were concerned, but even without a warrant because of the relationships they have, been able to talk their way inside of houses to make sure that there were no danger to your children. This is not something that we take lightly. It's not something we ever rest upon. Actually, this week, I was just sharing with the board, we went through several additional trainings. We are the first and only district in Westchester County in New York State, and according to Crisis GO in the United States, that has given permission to every one of our employees to lock down school from their phone immediately, because we're not interested in the aide calling to Mr. Gutterman or to any other principal to ask permission when they see somebody entering the school. Moments are lives, and so we entrust with our aides, with our custodians, with our cleaners the ability that if you see something and you think people are in danger, hit the button, and every police officer in this community will be notified in real time. We never, ever, 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 ever rest, and there's always more to do. But I just ask that, Kevin, if you wouldn't mind, you and Officer Dragoon coming up and talking about anything you want to share about our partnership, or things that you might want to let the community know that you are involved in to help relieve them?
My name is Sergeant Kevin Wong. I'm the Detective Division Supervisor. I also supervise the SROs. I'm here with Detective Michael Dragoon, and he's in charge of our training. Again, we're here just to show our support with our partners in the community. The Harrison Central School District is amazing when it comes to having an open line of communication with us, and I truly, truly appreciate that very much. And where we are today is unbelievable. I go to these meetings with other jurisdictions, and no other PD has the relationship with their, with their school district that we have. So thank you.
And we appreciate that partnership, and I know it's rare, and it's a shame that it's rare. And I know you have directed a lot of these trains. Mike, do you want to just come up and just talk about what we do and what you know about our schools? We've toured the buildings, and whatever you think you can share that's appropriate to share, because you know, as you well understand, parents are always scared when these terrible things occur.
Thanks to the relationship that we have with you that continues to grow, we've been allowed access into each of the schools, and our officers are basically constantly going through the schools so that they know the entire school, where the gymnasiums are, where the art rooms are, where the music rooms are, where all areas are that normally an officer may not know of, you know, in the basement or small hallways, stuff of that nature. So having that relationship with you guys and allowing us into the building has helped us dramatically. Each officer is now more confident that they can show up to a school, whether they have their maps on their phones or not, that they'll be able to get to the area of concern and help the students out.
And I know how hard you guys work at this. The drills are difficult to watch, but they're essential to making sure that you don't wait for the moment that you need to practice. And I also want to say, as somebody who has watched policing grow and grow and evolve in this terrible time, shout out to the Nashville Police Department, because that, in that terrible event, their courage and their ability to, to take care of those kids was really, it was moving. It's sad, but both.
Those officers set the standard.
They really did.
On what a police officer should do in that situation. They deserve applause and gratitude. They did a phenomenal job.
And I know I get very emotional about this, and I've said this to the board, but I know every SRO personally, and I know that they would be the first to step in line to save your kids. So there's a lot going on here tonight. Never think that this is a new idea in our community. We, we entrust a team of people to keep your kids safe. You're a part of that team. Parents always say to me, what can I do to help most? If you see someone who is exhibiting behaviors that make you concerned, you're not calling them out. Let us know. We will work with families. I will tell you, this is not a police department looking to prosecute kids. It's looking to rescue people that are at risk of hurting themselves and others. And the more we all share in that responsibility, the better I'm able to keep your children safe. It's a responsibility that is sacred to us, and we, we take it very seriously. So I want to thank you guys for coming out again, and for always showing up whenever we need you, and letting the community know that you're always right there for us. So thanks a lot. Okay, I'm going to take a deep breath, and let's have some good news.
Okay, on a lighter note. So yesterday, we had the kickoff for Relay for Life at the high school. It was held in the gym, and it was extremely well-attended. We love everyone taking the time to give back for such a wonderful cause.
And we watched our principal play some pretty wicked ping pong. She impressed us.
The Harrison High School band participated in the Yonkers Philharmonic Orchestra Concerto Competition, and Fjord Data earned second place. He performed the Artunian Trumpet, I'm sorry if I'm butchering that name, Artunian Trumpet Concerto, a professional trumpet repertoire, standard recognized for its technical and artistic demands entirely from memory. The competition is for high school musicians living or studying in Westchester. Fjord will perform as a featured soloist with the orchestra on May 7.
And you may remember, Fjord performed for you, and he was also first-seat All-State Trumpet. Pretty amazing musician.
The, all the elementary, middle, and high school string players entertained a nearly full house at the Harrison Edhatha High School Performing Arts Center on Monday, March 20th, at the Ninth Annual Strings Extravaganza, and it was amazing performance. Nearly 300 Harrison School District, Harrison Central School District students gathered together on one stage. I love it. Harrison High School Symphonic Winds performed at Carnegie Hall under the direction of Ms. Lohsher. Students also had the opportunity to attend a workshop with internationally acclaimed composer Dr. Timothy Marr. Participating in the Wind Ensemble is open to all interested students, so.
Yeah, that was quite an experience. I think Mr. Royal had to pull himself down off the ceiling. The kids sounded amazing. He shared a little bit that was on his phone. Imagine playing at that age in that venue. It was incredible experience.
Remarkable.
Yep.
Our high school debate team members Jack Borman and Reese Potash placed in the top six out of 92 debaters from around the country at the University of Kentucky's online tournament and earned bids to the Tournament of Champions. Jack Gesner, Charles Zinhouser, and Jack Borman qualified for Nationals. All three debaters will represent Harrison and Louisville, Kentucky in May. Our debate team always continues to impress. I mean, it's just.
And those of you that are new to the meeting, the Tournament of Champions is essentially the national championship of chess, of debate. And we've had, in the last 10 years, we've had, six times we've had the number-one debater in the country in that high school. So we're, we're very proud of Mr. Hertzig and the program he has built.
The DACA business team competed at the New York State DACA competition. Competitions required a written exam as well as live-action role-play. Thirty-five high school students competed at the statewide event in Rochester. Three students placed in the top five in New York State and will compete at the national competition in Orlando. Stella Perini, Kate Ansel, and Addison Valenti, nine students placed in the top 10 in the New York State competition, and eight students placed in the top 10 in the multiple-choice part or role-play portion. There were a tremendous amount of students, so if I sit and list everyone, we'll be here all night.
It's on the website.
It's on the website, and we are very proud of everyone competing.
Although I will give Stella Perini a shout-out. She was in the sectional finals and then went up to DACA to do this competition. That's a lot of.
A well-rounded student, to say the least.
To say the least.
On Friday, students participating in the IBA art exhibit created their work and were present to talk about their pieces and their process. Some of the work will be displayed on the bulletin boards outside in the art rooms, so please feel free to stop by. It's really incredible work, and we have just so many artistic, not only scholarly, but artistic and creative students, so.
Dr. Mulholland, Dr. Ladwig, and I all went to the exhibit. It's absolutely the best I've ever seen, but if you saw the quality of the reflections, the written pieces almost make the art even that much more profound. How long is that going to be up? It's going to be up at least three weeks, I think. So if you want to visit, you need to obviously sign in, but it's something we're seeing. Some of it will be put online, I know that, but it is incredible. And Mrs. Rowe and, tell me, her name just went out of my head, Christine Vitarello, did an incredible job. And remember, all these paintings and graphic arts are jewelry. They're part of their IB portfolio, so these are really high-level pieces of work. Great kids.
The Harrison Science Research participated in the Westchester Science and Engineering Fair and shared their projects with judges and with the public. Lauren Davidson and Alyssa Remesa qualified for the International Science and Engineering Fair, the Olympics of Science Fair, of science fairs, which will take place in Texas this year. And congratulations to all of our students who participated and won awards, because there was a tremendous amount across the board.
Yep.
The LMK Science and Engineering Fair on March 16th, we had 38 students showcase their science experiments and technology designs that they completed independently, and the event gave the students the opportunity to share their scientific research and engineering designs.
By the way, that was voluntary participation. I don't know if I would have done that if I were, kids didn't have to do it. They chose to do it.
And all of our spring sports are in full bloom, and it's exciting to see the students after school and on the fields, and the energy is there, so we are excited.
But before we jump into spring, check your email today. You've got the winter sports summary. We had a great season with so many kids performing well, league championships, all conference athletes, just a great, one of our better winter seasons ever. Some of the track records, too, that are all-time records were broken. Take a look. It's very impressive.
And yeah, just as always, keep an eye on the district calendar. There are so many wonderful events. I can't even believe that we are about, it's almost April. We have some exciting concerts coming up, and PTA meetings and budget presentations. There's a lot happening to be involved in and stay in the know.
Sounds a lot happening.
So with that, Dr. Will, I will pass it back over to you.
Thank you. I think we have spring break coming up. Somebody reminded me.
Oh, yes.
We're not here next week.
We do, next week, we have spring break.
Some of us are here, but some of us are not.
Thank you for that important reminder.
So in case you want to come to school, let us know. We'll see if we can work that out for you. So I'm going to sort of truncate my remarks tonight, because I've already talked about the one thing I hate to talk about. But I just want you to know, a couple very exciting things going on in the world of curriculum and instruction. We have just about completed the training of all of our elementary faculty. We will have it done pretty soon. Every one of them will have been trained in the primary years program, pedagogy, and planning process. Dr. Mulholland's been very busy planning our summer programs. We're going to be starting to roll those out pretty soon. There'll be some very exciting changes to them that I'm excited about. Also, this weekend, Dr. Ladwig held a Harrison-exclusive recruitment fair. Two hundred and twenty-four applicants yielded about 54 possible candidates for us to follow up on. I want to thank all of my administrators for giving up another Saturday to interview candidates and the tremendous work that comes out of HR and the screening of all those candidates, so we're excited about that. It's a very difficult market to hire teachers, so we like to get out early and get the very best as quickly as we can. I mentioned, since we're going to talk about safety, I'm just going to mention, we did Narcan training for all of our administrative staff and nurses and other support staff. Unfortunately, Narcan has become an essential tool with the overdose epidemic of fentanyl and other like drugs. Hopefully, we don't have to use it, but all of our staff are ready for it. We also did something called a reunification training this week, part of our ongoing process. In the event your children are ever separated from their teachers, we practice the ability to take attendance in real time, so every teacher in every school has the roster of every child, and whether they're your student or not, we can account for them. We're always thinking about how we would respond in a crisis moment. I also just want to acknowledge another event that happened at our high school that was quite traumatic, but again, I want to thank the faculty and the student body at Harrison High School. Ms. Bukema sent an email to all of her students, I don't know if you're aware, because one of our students was stricken with a brain aneurysm. He's doing better, but what is always impressive to me is the response of my faculty and the student body to the needs of other people. This is a student who joined us just this year as a senior, but is already an embedded and important member of our community. And the thing that always makes me proud is that when families or children are in need, this is a community that always responds. And so it's a point of pride for us that we never want to see tragedy, but it is the response to tragedy that often reminds me how lucky I am to be in a place where people authentically care about one another. So I just want to thank Ms. Bukema for her leadership during this critical time. As you can imagine, it's a traumatic experience for the family, but it's also a traumatic experience for faculty and kids, when somebody sitting next to you is suddenly stricken. And so the way that that school continually rises to be its best self is something we should all celebrate and be proud of. Speaking of celebrating and being proud, we are proud of the hard work that my entire team is doing on the budget, but before I introduce the budget presentation, I would like to turn it over to Mrs. Wolverton. The board also works darn hard on all of these things, and she has chaired the subcommittee of the board finance committee and kind of stewards this process for the board, so if you wouldn't mind, Lyndy?
Not a problem. Thank you, Dr. Will. Yes, this evening, we are having our third presentation on our budget development. Tonight, Tim Whipple will take us through our projected revenues, tax implications, and fund balances. At our last board meeting, we talked about our spending plan, putting all of our expenses together. Still not quite final. We will take that, take every possible moment we have to make sure that is fine-tuned. But I think it's really important to remember that as we do this work, we are putting together a spending plan that is going to address all of the needs of every student in this district, providing professional development and support for our teachers. We are also doing this within the confines of the tax levy cap and putting forth a budget that is fiscally responsible to the taxpayers in this community. So several things that we are keeping our eye on and trying to accomplish. And so this evening, as Tim texts us through projected revenues, you will see that we have no control over this part. So the budget will be over $130 million of a spending plan, but the revenue side that's going to cover it, we have no control. So on that note, I will turn it over to you.
And just for the audience, Tim is in the midst of a series of presentations, so you're not going to hear everything tonight that has been said before, but those of you that go to your PTA meetings and you want to endure this multiple times, you'll hear the whole story when we come to you. So tonight is a moment in time, as Lyndy mentioned, this is number three, where we're going to be talking primarily about revenue. So, Tim?
Yep, that's right. Thank you very much. First of all, I think I'd just like to recognize Joe Sisery, who's here this evening, and Joe's a big part of our budget, our budget team and the business office. Joe is the treasurer of the district and helps me tremendously with especially the revenues, because you know, a lot of, a lot of the revenues that we deal with, as Lyndy said, are projections. We're trying to project what's going to happen next year in February, March, and April of the year before. So it's, you know, somewhat challenging, and you know, we do the best that we can, and Joe's a great asset, and I'd like to thank him for his contributions. He also said that he can jump in at a moment's notice if I go into a coughing fit, so I appreciate that, Joe. I may.
All right, we'll check, we'll see, we'll try that out.
Yes, exactly. So as Lyndy said, you know, I'm going to recap real quick where we've been and then go into the revenue. So our work session number one, we talked all about the tax levy limit calculation. And if you remember, the current-year levy, which is the total amount we collect from taxpayers, right, is $116 million. The calculated increase, based on a series of machinations in the formula, generates only about $2 million for us next year. So that, that says to us, we can only levy. us next year. So that, that says to us, we can only levy or collect from our taxpayers a total of $118 million next year. All right. This is the formula. I'm not going to go into this in too much detail, but the two main factors that generate the money for us are the tax base growth factor and the allowable CPI growth. Again, the CPI is the Consumer Price Index and that's a, an indication of inflation. All right. So I looked this up just today. The previous 12 months, the rate of inflation is 6%. So unfortunately for us, we are only allowed, and every New York State school district is allowed to increase the tax levy by the lesser of 2% or the CPI. So we have all these expenses, just like we all do at home with utilities and a host of other things. And unfortunately, we're capped by this restriction of 2%, even though, you know, we all know in the economy, inflation's around six right now. Okay. So again, at the end of the day, we're allowed to increase the levy by $2 million. So this is a challenge for us because as we talked about at our last meeting, we know that in order to operate a budget that supports all the things that, that are most important to us, all of our, of our teachers, all of our professional development, transportation, all of these things will cost us around $135 million next year. Okay. So that's an increase of almost $5 million. So you can see from the previous slide, if we're only allowed to increase the levy by $2 million and we have expenditures totaling an increase of $5 million, we have a $3 million situation that we have to deal with. And that's what we're going to talk about today is how do you fill that gap between what the levy increase is and what our total expenditures are? Okay. Lou, do you want to just take this next slide, if you don't mind, and just talk about our programmatic improvements?
Thanks. Typically, we go into this in greater detail, but because we're in the middle of the presentation, just the highlights. So we're going to see a very large influx of fifth graders and we need to, we need to plan for that in order to maintain class sizes. We will be able to keep teaming intact, but in order to do that, we need to add a minimum of two full-time teachers to the upcoming sixth grade. So the rising fifth grade is going to be a big wave. We are also struggling with some students who don't do well in a typical school environment. Mostly, this is emotionally based. And so we have had great success building a therapeutic support class at our high school. And we always try to keep all of the Harrison students in district for as much as possible. So if we can build a program that'll accommodate these kids, we want to do it. And so we're going to be adding a therapeutic support classroom here to the middle school. That's just, it's not just a teacher, it's a teaching assistant and a teacher aide. It's a very intense ratio, but we think that we can keep those children on track and successful in the middle school by adding this program. As I mentioned earlier, we are in the full bloom of implementation of the primary years program. Unfortunately, the budget will not permit me to implement elementary world foreign languages this year, world languages this year. So that's going to be pushed out at least for another year. But we are also trying to enhance some of the opportunities for sixth grade students who can't participate and modify by putting some intramural athletics in place. Modest changes. The other thing that this budget accomplishes that is not here is it maintains professional development and all the existing class sizes across the district. Back to you, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay. So jumping into the actual revenue. So we have a few different buckets that I'll go through. The first one are considered tax items, charges for services. Again, as I indicated, that first line is our real property taxes. Okay. So $118 million is the amount that we will levy. That's within the tax levy limit of 1.79% of an increase. That generates about $2 million in taxes next year. The interesting thing that we've seen this year is a new pilot payment. And pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes. Now, these are other arrangements with corporations that pay us individual sums of money outside of the regular tax payment that you and I would typically pay as homeowners. So in this situation, Morgan Stanley will not pay taxes as they do as a regular business owner, but they'll pay a direct payment to the school district. And that will increase that particular line by about 1.4 million. And that's pretty significant. This Morgan Stanley new pilot payment will occur for the next 14, or 15 years. So next year and then 14 subsequent years. The next line is sales tax. Again, this is a pretty significant increase for us because we receive a portion of the Westchester County sales tax receipts. They spread it out between all municipalities in the county. We always look forward to, every month, we get an analysis from the county. Joe and I get it and we look at what did the county generate in sales tax last month. And we can predict with a high degree of certainty what the, what the ratio will be for Harrison. And we project this to be quite a bit more than what it is in the current year. So we did go and we increased our budget by about $420,000 next year because we are confident that sales tax will outpace what it has in the past couple of years. Also, those main three things are really what drives the total tax item. So you can see right off the bat, there's $4 million towards that $5 million of additional expenditures. So that's the majority of our, of our increases in this particular area. The next area, not a lot to talk about here, other than to say that the interest in earnings is increased by a significant amount next year. We, as you all would imagine, based on inflation and based on the current interest rates, the amount of cash that we have in our accounts at any given time, we plan to generate a significant more, higher level of interest in earnings next year. We've increased the budget by $737,000. This is again, a very huge part of why we were able to balance our budget next year. And as I've told the board and I've told others, you know, we need to be very careful with this because at a time in the future, when this subsides and goes back down to, you know, levels that we historically have seen for interest rates, we will have to take this number back down to around that $300,000 number or even less. I tell people, last year, we generated only about $116,000 in total interest income. So you can see how fast this can go up. And again, this can also go down just as quick. So we need to be very mindful in the future that this could be an area that will cause us difficulty in order to balance our budget.
You have the same anxiety too about sales tax being a little bit inflated this year.
I do. You know, I, I think about my own spending habits. You know, am I buying more right now or do things just cost more? And, you know, so when we go to the store, you know, my wife and I will shop for groceries, you know, we're not going out and buying more groceries. Things just seem to cost more. So is that the reason why sales tax has outpaced what historically has happened? I tend to think yes. So as prices will soften somewhat in the next maybe couple of years, will we see a sales tax go back down? It's a question. I don't know. It remains to be seen. But I, to your point, I do worry about that as well.
Well, actually, it's your point. And you remind us all the time that we need to be conservative about these assumptions because there's a possibility that these things are going to really level off in the future.
Exactly. Yep. The next category, again, pretty significant. So we have, you know, we don't generate a ton of state and federal aid in our district. And we talked about this in the past. I'm not going to go through it again, but just generally speaking, Harrison is known as a high wealth district in terms of the eyes of New York State. All right. We're low need, high wealth, which means our income per pupil is very high and the property wealth per pupil is very high in Harrison. And that, and that's, you know, a good thing in some ways, but it's also a detractor in some ways because we don't generate the amount of revenue in terms of state aid that other districts very near to us would do. And a perfect example of that is if you look at foundation aid, which is our highest aid, our largest aid driver, we can see an increase of about $103,000 next year. That represents a 3% increase. And Harrison is one of the few districts in the state that will generate the lowest amount of increase of foundation aid based on our wealth factors. So again, that's not anything that we can ever depend on to, to help us get through tough budgets because, you know, on paper compared to the state averages, we're just very, very wealthy. And again, you know, that's.
Which is not really an accurate picture because as you've pointed out, they're disproportionate wealth in parts of our community.
Correct.
And then there are working class families and I want to remind people, 24% of our high schools on free and reduced lunch, but the census data is only as one variable. It's the total property wealth. And so neighboring districts have gotten windfalls this year and we got 103, I think. Right? So.
Yeah, it's a good point. You know, the state takes averages. So we might have some homeowners that are at the high end of those averages. They drive the average way up. Same with, the same with income. You know, the state takes all of your, all of the personal income tax and they take an average. You know, we could have some individuals in, in the district that do very well and can drive that average up. So again, it's not a great reflection, but it's the system that the state has in order to generate the aid. A couple of the categories I just want to touch on real quick, building aid. You'll see a pretty significant increase in building aid and this is something that we've worked on, Joe and I worked on quite a bit over the past year or so. We filed all of our final cost reports with the state of New York for the building projects that we had done over the past number of years. So if you remember, we did about a $46 million project. We voted on that in 2016. All of the final cost reports are done. The projects are done. Now we can file our reports and the aid will start to generate. So the increase for this year is 281,000 and that will be consistent for the next 15 years. So that, if you kind of extrapolate that over 15 years, that's about $4.2 million that we will generate. And that is a savings to the district and to the taxpayers based on the aid stream that will come back into the district. So that's a, that's a great news story.
That is a great story.
And we've got all those reports done. The other category that I'd like to speak on is BOSI's aid. You've heard me talk about this a little bit the last couple of years and we've tried to utilize BOSI services where it makes sense for us, especially for the purchase of equipment. And you can see, this is starting to generate income now, right? The plan is starting to pay off. This is, these are, this is aid that will come next year based on expenses that we make this year. So all of the computer equipment that we've bought, laptops, smart boards, all of those things that we would typically buy on our own, we're now purchasing through BOSI's and we're generating a level of reimbursement from the state that will acknowledge the fact that we are buying in bulk with other school districts. And we can, I think we can continue to see a pattern that this will be at least maintained, if not go up over the next few years. Again, another aid stream that we really didn't have before. So that's an increase of all of our state aid categories of about $687,000. The last revenue category, it's not a true revenue, right? Because fund balances are one-time money. So it's not, it's not really considered a revenue, but for the purposes of tonight, we're going to talk about a piece of our budget that we use to help bridge the gap between expenditures and revenues. And I like to, I like to think of the use of fund balance really in three ways. Fund balance comes from savings from yearly budgets. So if a budget does a little bit better than we expect, we generate savings or a fund balance and we can apply that in different ways. And this board has historically been very strategic about the use of fund balance and we will continue to do that. You know, when I think about, what do you do with savings from year to year? There's really three things that a district can do. They can lower the cost of next year's budget, which is the appropriation for tax reduction. So they use some of that money to lower the taxes for the taxpayers. They can use some of the money maybe for, for other reserves to save a little bit of, of the savings. And they, they can also use money for fund balance for the purchase of one-time equipment or capital expenditures. And as you can see, in the current year, we've used 1.2 million for capital projects that we normally wouldn't have been able to do except for the use of some surplus monies and some savings that we had in our fund balance. So again, the board has been very strategic using it for those three categories. We're going to continue to do that next year. We're actually using less fund balance to balance our budget next year, which is a good, a good sign.
Great news.
And really, the main category that we're, we're lowering is, is the capital projects area. We knew we had some extra savings, so we wanted to generate, or we wanted to generate some additional projects this year. We used 1.2 million. Next year, we only plan to use 400,000 from fund balance for these projects that we plan to do in the next fiscal year. So again, the use of fund balance will be decreased by about $500,000.
The only thing I want to highlight that you said, Tim, for the new listeners, is that we are very strategic in that we never build in any long-term expenses attached to this money. These are one-time events that we can fund in the moment because this is not necessarily a recurring fund stream, funding stream.
Yep. Okay. So kind of just going back, this was a chart that we showed last time. Districts have to show their budgets in three main areas, program, administrative, and capital. Those three components together will generate a budget of $135.2 million next year. That's an increase of 3.8%. And kind of moving on, so we, we know what our expenditures are. On the top line, you'll see 135.2. Real property taxes equal about 118.4 million. Pilot payments, we have our sales tax number that we talked about, state and federal aid, use of fund balance. And again, total revenues equal total expenses. So we currently have a budget gap of zero, which is good. This time last year, if you remember, we did have a small budget gap. We were waiting for state aid projections to come from the finalization of the state budget, which should happen by April 1st. So we're expecting that to happen any day now. You know, this year, we don't anticipate any significant increase in, in state aid. The state, as you know, really decided to fund all the districts this year from the foundation aid. So we believe that the money that was, has been given or promised so far is really the extent of what we can expect. So we tried to really support a budget and present a budget to the board that didn't have a budget gap that we could get all the way there without having to depend on waiting for the state budget to be passed. So we're very, you know, I'd be very proud to share that and, you know, a tremendous amount of work went in to try to get us to this point. As I said earlier, you know, it's very early for next year. You know, things can change on a dime. We've had a couple of things happen this week where we didn't expect expenditures to pop up for next year. We've had to factor them into our projections. So again, this is not completely final. We, we hope the board will take action on April 12th to approve the budget. But again, between now and then, we could have other things that pop up that we will have to bring to your attention and make some changes if, if need be. So I will say, we are happy where we are and hopefully we don't have any, any surprises. The last thing I really want to talk about is estimated tax implications. So, you know, we try to give individuals in the community an idea of what their taxes could expect to increase next year based on what we have for a budget so far. So what I like to tell people is the only thing the Board of Education really has control over is the tax levy, right? And even that is somewhat out of our control, right? Because it's generated by a formula. The rate is actually established by the town of Harrison through the assessments that are on all of our, all of our homes in the community. So you'll see the tax levy is up by 1.79. That's within the tax levy limit. It's right out the limit. Assessments, as you will see, from one year, from la, from the current year to next are expected to actually decrease. And if you look at the number, 125.3 million, right? So we know 125.3 million is not the real number of the total assessed value in the community. This is an unequalized number. If you were to equalize this number, it's significantly higher than that. Okay. And just to give you perspective, why did it go down this year? So this, this indicates that the number went down by about a million, right? 126 to 125.3. If you equalize that, that's about $84.8 million in total value. That's the amount it decreased from one year to the next. If you look at the Morgan Stanley pilot agreement, the Morgan Stanley company is off the tax roll. That affected the taxes by about $106 million. So if you take Morgan Stanley out of the equation, you could really have an indication that our ta, our assessments went up in this current year. Does that make sense to kind of everybody? So I look at that as like a one-off. You know, I'm hoping that based on what we're seeing in the community, that taxes and assessments will continue to go up. This was unfortunately, a year where Morgan Stanley did have an arrangement with the IDA and they came off of the tax rolls. So, but I think it's a good indicator that had it not been for that, we would see a positive indication of our assessments. So the estimated tax rate, again, this is information that is really provided by the assessor's office in the town of Harrison, suggests that the tax rate will go up by about 2.76. So when people look at their taxes, it'll be closer to 2.76 rather than the 1.79% tax levy increase. And that pretty much concludes the presentation. Obviously, we'll take any questions. Next time, as I indicated, April 12th, we will be presenting a final budget. Next time, as I indicated, April 12th, we will be presenting a final budget and asking the board at that time to approve and adopt the 2324 budget.
Any questions from the board? Just want to talk a little bit about the concept of assessment, because it's confusing to some people. Pilot aside, when you see all the building going on in the community, you would wonder why aren't the property values, the total property, going up? And they will, eventually. Sometimes those properties come off the rolls, or they're actually experiencing, because they're in development, they're not fully assessed, but we do anticipate, this is the positive side of development, that as more properties come on the rolls, there's more assessed value, so they share in the distribution of your taxes. So it's a mixed bag. Sometimes when you have more of the community or commercial properties assisting in paying the taxes, your taxes can go down. On the other hand, the other part of that is that as the enrollment or the impact on services in a school go up, the costs can also go up. And so how do you find that balance? And we have major developments, which is not a part of our presentation tonight, but it is a regular part of the total presentation. We talk about the almost fourteen hundred projects that are in process here, and those will help, but they also have the potential to hurt if they're not managed carefully. So we, I'm always reluctant to say, when people say there's too much development, that's not necessarily the case, because sometimes when big properties go fallow, they put a tax challenge, and that drags your assessment down, and parents and homeowners have to pay more. So we want those properties to flourish and be on the rolls, but at the same time, it does have an impact on the schools. So there is a strange relationship that we have here, we have to watch all these moving pieces, because schools don't have the luxury of building a building at a moment's notice when the parson schools become overwhelmed, or there are too many, too much building going on in the purchase catchment. So we are mindful of all those things within the context of our budget. Assessment's a complicated thing, I guess that's what I'm trying to say. Good job, Mr. Whipple, thank you. Joe, you were great, you didn't have to rescue him, he didn't cough, and we know you did a good job on the revenue side, especially on getting us all that building aid. All right, having said that, I think we can, Madam President, with your permission, shift to your agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Whipple, I know you're under the weather, thanks for powering through, go home. Joe, take him out of here.
Moving on to the personnel report, I will take the personnel report on consent, unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, certificated personnel, one resignation, two, regular appointment, SED clearance received, three, temporary appointment, SED clearance received, four, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received, five, leave of absence without pay, six, change of status, B, non-certificated personnel, one resignation, two, extra compensation appointment, C, other, one, student, teacher, observer, SED clearance received. Two, 9/13 evaluation. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report? Second? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Moving on to the administrative report, I will take on consent, unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, acceptance of donation from the Samuel J. Preston PTA Fifth Grade Committee, B, acceptance of donation from the Samuel J. Preston PTA, C, acceptance of donation from the Harrison High School PTA, D, approval of donation to establish the healthcare scholarship fund, E, acceptance of donation from Regeneron Science Talent Research Society for Science, F, appointment of impartial hearing officer, G, approval of CSE CPSE minutes, H, approval of CSE CPSE recommendations, I, 2023-24 school district calendar, J, approval of supplemental memorandum of agreement. Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second? Questions or comments?
I have one comment. Dr. Leibert, would you mind going to the microphone and explaining the very important and nuanced change we made to our school calendar, because we finally got the international baccalaureate testing issue cleared up? Thanks, Brian.
Sure, Dr. Wool. So we are in a, just let me get to that calendar.
Yeah, I should have, I should have warned you I was coming.
That's okay, no worries. So the development of the calendar is actually a process that takes a couple of months, and we're looking at a whole host of variables as we do that. Those include New York State testing days, IB testing days, college board testing days, when we're required to have Regents exams and rating days, and some of that information is known to us in the early stages of the development process of the calendar, and other details are not known until a little bit later. Specifically, we were waiting to get some information on the IB assessment schedule, which typically those exams begin around the third week of April, and sometimes that doesn't conflict with other obligations that we have because of the timing of things. However, this year, we were mindful of when Passover was in our calendar, and that starts in 2024 on April 23rd, and that's very close to the time of the IB testing. However, we were pleased to find out that the IB testing actually begins on the 25th. So, we're able to make an adjustment to the calendar and recognize the start of Passover, which we know, of course, is an important celebration to many families in our community, and we were able to locate the third unused snow day. We build in three snow days into our calendar, and if we don't need to use those, we can give those days back as days off from school. So the third unused snow day we've built in as Monday, April 22nd. So if we don't use that unused snow day, or that snow day, will be a day off from school, and that means that would be a four-day weekend in April, which we think is, you know, obviously a great benefit to families that are going to be celebrating the Passover holiday.
And the Tuesday is a day off?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's possible it could be a four-day weekend, but at a minimum, the Tuesday is off.
Tuesday for sure, yep.
And Michelle, you will remind us in the morning to put the newest calendar up, please, because I might not remember. Thank you. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
And the one other thing, Madam, before you call the vote, I just want to note all of the donations from our various PTAs, isn't that incredible?
That's what I was just going to say. We have a lot of thank yous. Both the Preston Fifth Grade Committee, as well as the PTA for their generous donation, the Harrison High School PTA, the donation to establish the healthcare scholarship fund, as well as donation from the Regeneron Science Talent Research.
So you know how the Regeneron money came, because we had the semifinalists, they get an award, but the school gets an award as well. So we want to thank our hard-working science students for that great accomplishment as well.
Lots of thank yous.
Lots of thank yous.
So, all in favor to approve the administrative report?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. Moving on to Finance and Facilities Report, I will take on consent, unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, resolution calling the 2023 Annual District Meeting and election of the Harrison Central School District and authorizing related matters, B, approval of CSE CPSE annual reviews, C, approval of the Harrison High School Photography Agreement with Legacy Studios, D, Contract for Educational Services, Rye City School District, E, Contract for Health Services, White Plains City School District, F, Contract for Health Services, Somer Central School District, Contract, G, Contract for Health Services, Greenberg Central School District, H, 2022-23 appropriation transfers. That is it. Do I have a motion to approve the Finance and Facilities Report? Second? Questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none. Our next regular, our next regularly scheduled business meeting will take place on April 12th, 2023. Do I have a motion to close the business meeting? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned. Good night.
Good night. Thank you, Madam President.